All right, so this regularly scheduled meeting in the State Department of Education will come to order. The first order of business is to approve the agenda as shown on the screen. Do we have a motion to approve?
To move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second item is to approve the minutes from the last being that were distributed in advance. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Dr. Freeman?
Right. Great recommendations tonight. Our first one is two of our student athletes who are state champions in class 7A in cross country. And this is the first time in our history, right, with it, we have won the boys and girls individual state cross country. And they won it in the 5K. Is that right? So don't you listen to these times now, okay? So that's how many miles? 3.1.
3.1.
So Ethan did this in 15 minutes and 18.58 seconds.
You can't drive 3 miles in 31.
And Crawford did this in 18 minutes, 7.92 seconds. State champions, Ethan Strand and Crawford West. Come on up. Now, what grade are you in?
I'm a junior.
Junior. Okay. And you missed last week's meet month's meeting. I'm kidding Ethan, because he's only, he's here at about every meeting. I need you to be coming each meeting. Crawford, what grade are you in?
I'm a sophomore.
Sophomore. All right. So what are your plans when you finish school? High school?
I don't, I don't really know yet. Still thinking about it. It's still pretty early in that process.
Is running going to be a part of that?
Yes, sir. Hopefully. That's the goal.
That's good. We'd like that. How about you, Crawford?
I want to run college, but I don't really know yet.
That's really fantastic. Coach, some comments?
Two special people. I would just like to, you see just those two athletes, but they represent a coaching staff. They represent two special teams that had a great year, but it's exciting to see shining gems of what they have accomplished this year. And they both have different stories of how they got to where they finished this year, but just very commendable their sacrifice to what's the, what we say the requirements, what they have to do to be where they are are really commendable and two special people for sure. And you told Ethan to come back, so he kept you out of your way.
The only people who attended more meetings than Ethan are the board. Falling right in my, so how cold was it the morning you ran?
It was cold. It wasn't too cold.
I think it was like 35 degrees when we started.
He's more impressive to me. Daddy comes.
It's not.
Comments you guys want to make?
Take that from me out there.
I'm sure.
Well, I'm super proud of you. This is, this is excellent. We love to excel in all different areas and you guys really are quite an example, quite think of a lot of things. Be well in your schoolwork as well and you're competing at a high level. Congratulations. Thanks for effort. Best of you, Hills.
Thank you.
Well done.
Coach Andrews, come on up. Jeremy Andrews has been named the Alabama Physical Education Teacher of the Year, and I need to, I need my script to say what organization this is. The Alabama State Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation and Dance.
Yes.
And so he was named this, and he's been the PE teacher at Cal State High School for years. He was named this several months ago, but then it became public in the fall. Dr. Hunsberger, I saw you. Some words to share about our-
Oh, man. Jeremy is just such an asset to our school. In addition to his duties as PE, he is super efficient, helps with our walkers every day, which is quite a task. And he just does a great job, but ultimately, we love the fact that he cares deeply for the kids. And even with music selection in the gym, is this appropriate for K-25? So just makes meaningful contributions to our school faculty, so we're very cool.
Well, the distinguished guests actually are the people on the back row back there. We know how much he loves kids because he's got a roadblock.
Can you bring a love?
Love and share this with their dad. Come on.
They are all high cuties, I might add. One sent me.
So is this orange and blue for a particular reason?
No.
So anything you guys want to say about your dad? He's also your PE teacher.
He's cool.
He's cool.
You might want him to record that so you can play it back. 14 is reminding us.
Jeremy, congratulations. This is fantastic. We seem to each year get acknowledged across the state with wonderful teachers, and I can't think of a more important thing in a day and a night when we talk so much about wellness, that we've got people in positions that have kids love to come to and do things that make them physically, mentally, emotionally fit. So appreciate your commitment. Yeah, congratulations. Okay. But we'll get into the financial statement now. Mr. Rand? You're welcome to stay once you've also been going. You're ready for the next team. Thank you guys for coming.
Good afternoon. I have provided the October 2019 financial statements and check register for your review. As of October 2019, which is the first month of our fiscal year, we have collected 4.5% of our budget revenues, and our collections this time last year were the same. October is historically the lowest month for Avalon tax revenues. We will begin seeing collections in late November, which will gradually increase through March. And our total expenditures for October 2019 were at 8.5% of budget this year, and last year we were at 9%. About 8% is 1/12 of our budget, so that's what we would like to see for the month of October. And all board bank accounts have been reconciled as of October 31st, 2019.
Ms. Rand, I recommend the board approve the financial statement for October 2019.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
To move.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye. Under consent items, I recommend the board approve the following consent items related to out-of-state overnight field trips from Vestavia Hills High School, Posits, and disposal of property from the board office.
Per the superintendent's recommendation around consent items, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Under new business, I recommend the board approve the agreements between the City of Vestavia Hills and the board regarding access to the Vestavia Hills City Schools like the security system has submitted.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve? To move. Second?
Second.
Commentary?
Yes, I'd like Dr. Martin to give you just a brief of these two memorandums.
Sure. We worked very closely with legal counsel, had some valuable learning that we did over the summer in terms of FERBA. And so what this does is allow us to bring our practice that we've been doing here in Vestavia Hills in terms of allowing members of our Vestavia Hills Police Department have access to cameras as well as our SROs. So one memorandum of understanding is for our desk sergeants that have footage, availability there at the police station. So that's one of the MOUs, and the other MOU is to allow our SROs to be school officials. And so this allows them to continue the practice that we've had of them viewing the camera footage.
Ms. Cook, thank you for coming tonight. The city council acted on these-
We did.
-memorander slides, please.
Last meeting.
And if they're okay.
Any other questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Under personnel, I recommend the board approve personnel actions as submitted.
Per the superintendent's recommendation around personnel, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Questions? All good? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Our administrative report tonight is a capital projects update. I can share a few things with you relative to various campus.
Do you have any shaky drone footage tonight, Dr. Martin? Okay. Don't need to have a warning.
Yes, there is a disclaimer on the presentation there, so get your dronamine out. I'll just, I'll just tell you that November was very windy when we put the drone up, so if you need to, look away. Stole my thunder right out. Okay, really three things. We're going to talk to you about some key dates, show you some updates on two campuses that we've been working on, one that we've completed, and then answer any questions that you have. So I've added Dolly Ridge in here, other than, I know Ms. Belsky's here, Dr. Aronoff, I don't think I've seen him, but very proud of Dolly Ridge. So you can see here on the carpool loop, our final stage there, the parking, all of the final inspection was done July 30th. Our new addition, 13 classroom addition, completed August 27th, and then we had our open house in celebration on September 9th. But I wanted you to show sort of the stages from May of 2019 until November, what the transformation that's taken place on that campus. We've got two different videos, the before and the after, and what's going to cue that up for us. So this is the May, if you remember, we received the building shortly after Jefferson County completed school for the 2018-19 school year. This is where it gets a little shaky. I apologize, but you can see as we're moving back to the new addition, the new addition is not yet complete. The rectangle at the rear of the school there was being used as lay down, so you'll see a little bit of a change there. We have done some work on that baseball softball field off to the right, you'll see that as well. I think we talked last time about it may be difficult to play soccer, lacrosse, or football on that field right there. We'll come back across the campus once we reverse here. And so you can see the new addition was not completed. May, off to the right, was just a parking area. You can see the island there with all of the trees that the drive circles around. And then if you look off to the right, that was where they had their playground in the rear of the school. And so we've changed that pretty dramatically here over the course of the summer and throughout a little bit of the fall. I'd like to blame that last piece on the wind, but that was just user error. All right, so this is now here, a week or so ago, that we went back out. You can see off to the right, we have our playground space, parking space, the island. We've thinned that out quite a bit there where the trees, where the circle drive comes back around. New sidewalk landscaping at the front of the school. And you can see the rear of the school now is where we have our carpool loop. We've also brought that drive around to the front. That did not exist before. Ample parking at the rear of the school. There's our 13 classroom addition that's complete now. We had our open house there in September. And then at the back, we still have some work that we need to do on that rectangle, still working through that process of baseball softball should be ready for practices come pitchers and catchers in January, when we have them report.
That's a tremendous amount of work, kind of short amount of time.
That's right.
So Lori and Ty and Construction Facilities Group, I mean tremendous job, given the handover, which one we all kind of done, the flexibility of the students and flexibility of the faculty, really, really well done.
It was definitely, I think Dr. Aronoff's mentioned this a couple of times, but I mean effort from, from Tony, his crew, to I know Brennan and Sean and all those individuals, and then most important, the teachers and parents and families, members that came in and supported as well, so.
As the parking, I know you've had a couple of big events there, has the parking been enough?
We learned some things over our events, and we, you know, we'll have to stagger some things, just like all the other schools do. So we're, we feel like we're, you know, with the extra lot that they purchased, we feel like we will have more later on. But we will, you know, with Ridge Fest, we had to, you know, get some buses to come and things like that. But that's what any school will have those kinds of things. So we're learning our way through, and we feel like we have good plans in place.
We'll transition and pivot at this point from Dolly Ridge over to the new Posits campus. And we're, we're close. I'll just say that. You can see some dates here. We have our band chorus edition, final inspection is December 9th. And so starting tomorrow, we'll do our life safety inspections. We should have our state inspector here, starting tomorrow, each week through the Christmas holiday. And so we'll start life safety buildings A, B, and C, and then we'll come back with the remainder of those buildings on December 2nd. So we should have the state inspector in town here for the next couple of weeks. Just as a reminder, and you can see in the back there as well, if you're not able to see this, but this building, if you don't mind tearing, but sneak over here real quick. This building right here, A building, is where we'll house sixth grade. B building is this building here, we have our kitchen cafeteria, and then our offices are in that space there. C building, we have some CTE, and eighth grade will be in C. As we come over to D building, which is this building right here, we have our media center, and that's really the heart of the facility. E is the mural building, and that will house seventh grade and some CTE classes. And then the upper gym is this space here, where the number three is, we have our coral area, we have band where the two is, and then the new lower gym is there in that space number one. And so similar to what we had with Dolly Ridge, I have some drone footage. Again, this is where I'm going to tell you, look away, because when we did go out to film, it was a little bit windy, and that was not user error. So push that forward, wait if you don't mind explaining that for us. So this actually is footage from July of 2018, and then we'll go to May of 2019, and then we'll go to present.
And that's where the coral and the band are, right there?
That's right. This place, right here, so chorus, band, and you can see the transition there. So chorus, band, and then the new gym is still being worked on there. New roof by this point in May of 2019 for the entire facility. You can see our drives as you come down, and I'll speak to the drives here in just a second, with the loop as you come back around it, that would be the southern portion of the facility.
Those are all new HVAC units on top, right? Mostly?
Not even, not yet.
I was going to say, yeah.
There was some that was in, within five years, was out.
Yeah, that's good.
So you can see A building in the front, B, D, C in the back. They're working on band chorus. Mural building right here, which is E, and then our upper gym is there. At this point, the baseball and softball, that package is still being worked on. This is still in stadium, you can see. Again, this is in, in May. So that space, you can see this is still being used as lay down, following that site package that was done in package A. Okay? And so this was a week or so ago. You can see baseball with a retaining wall, they're working on two lane drive going around the backside of the gym. The gym is now all but complete on the exterior with canopy.
Is that practice or competition?
They're still having conversation, but I think they'll be able to use it for both.
Okay.
Both gyms for competition. You can see C building here, starting to work on those four lanes, and I'll discuss that here in a minute. And you can see the work that's taking place there off of Columbiana. And then we'll come back across the face of the facility. So you can see work off of Columbiana there, and I'll share with you some, some dates on that as well, with that turn lane that goes into, into the site. Remember this light, there was a light that existed here, is now being pushed to the northern end of the campus, and this light here remains at the southern end. There's been some conversation and questions about the tunnel, but because we're expanding the tunnel, no, it will be, it also doesn't beat ADA requirement, so not, not be utilized. And we'll track back across the stadium, because I'd like for you to see the baseball So you can see gravel is down there on the softball field. The softball field will be turf, and then they'll come back and continue to work on baseball. Baseball will be sod.
And we could either decide baseball field, right?
Yeah.
Just for practice purposes.
Well, it's replacing some of the fields that we've lost, so.
And I will say, if you toured them, that didn't do it justice, because the inside of those buildings were nothing but stuck, foundation is stuck. You can't see that from the drone, but for anybody that toured it, there was nothing in that building.
Yeah, prior to, prior to, yes. Yeah, the drones do a good job on the exterior showing, but yes.
The internals were nothing.
So you can see here in terms of the facility, its entirety, just a couple of things, and talking to the site superintendent, they're at that point now where they're doing finishes. So heavy concentration on the cleaning of the facility and the prep for final inspection. So they're working on things such as fire alarms and, and some of the other life safety items that they have. In terms of exterior, working on paving, striping, and signage, and then also some of the soil, I'm sorry, some of the, the seed and hay, that's what they're working on there at the main facility. In terms of the gym, I'll go ahead and fast forward that, move that forward. You can see that, I've got a pretty big picture there at the bottom of what that lower gym looks like going back. You can see the upper gym up in the top right, so they have four finished down goals that they even put, put levers in as well. So we're just about done with that gym. Still have some work on the lower gym that they'll be working through. In terms of, I think I shared with you before, in terms of timeline, they're thinking that's going to be done at the same time that the entirety of the other part of the facility is done.
And so since we're just moving over, you know, we net out two more gyms, a whole new rectangle playing surface, and then two diamonds.
That's right.
Which is really, I mean, great. And I know that's part of their operational rhythm that Posits to have the two gyms and stuff, so to be able to preserve that.
That's right.
It's really good.
Any other questions on the facility or the gym? Moving ahead, I did want to, to show this here. There have been just a few changes since I gave an update back in May. If you recall September, the board approved COR number 11, ended doing, so it took the recommendation of Skipper. And so just, just some numbers. We should have 224 parking spaces on this campus in comparison to 149 at the current Posits campus. I think I shared before, we're talking about the difference between about 135,000 square feet at the current Posits campus to 192,000 square feet at the new campus, so considerably more space. You'll have more parking space as well. We had about 7,000 feet of queuing space at, that's what we were estimating for this campus, but Skipper thought that we needed more queuing space for the amount of traffic that we have on that campus. And so what was done with that COR back in September was to go back to that original, and you can see that red line that comes around here, go back to that original recommendation, which would provide four lanes going around the exterior of the campus. And so what that does is it gives us 10,300 feet of queuing space. So numbers wise, what does that equate to? In May, we were projecting 358 cars using 20 feet per car, 358 cars on campus. With the additional lane, we'll be able to get about 515. So being able to move those cars through the pattern that Mr. Pennington, Dr. Pennington, and the SROs recommend. So that's, that was the recommendation that was brought. As far as the baseball softball, use these same renderings for that. The contract completion date for baseball softball, we're looking at January 8th as the contracted date. Softball turf delivering installation should occur here by the start, by the 1st of December. Anticipated softball field completion by the contractor at this time is December 13th. So they're thinking they'll be able to turn softball over to us sooner. And then in terms of the grade irrigation sod at the baseball field, they're thinking it's going to be the end of December, which aligns nicely with our ability to use those come the spring. So I think Coach Seeger's athletic director was hoping to get those by middle of January, so we should be able to hit that mark, according to a recent conversation with the contractor. And then the last slide, package D, looking at Columbiana. Contract completion date that we have on file is December 18th with Norris. Third lane addition and possible traffic disruption planning, they're looking at early to mid-December. So I just, I want to make sure that I reference that for individuals traveling along Columbiana, maybe smart to move out to 65, to go down, don't be taking that down to one lane. And then in terms of permanent striping and signal installation, they're looking at late December, early January. So those were our three packets that are ongoing there at Vestavia Hills.
You know, when you were talking about the skirt footage there versus Posits, and then moving, you know, obviously we'll have a lot of excess capacity. Fortunately, Posits moved the ninth grade down to that campus and stuff. I mean, Jackie, Steve, and Mary, I think this may be, I mean, Steve was at Vestavia when I was 13 states, but I mean, since then to now, have we ever, I mean, I don't ever remember us having like literal capacity in the model. I know we've always been bumped up against capacity by the time we had added on, the growth rate was so fast that we'd already kind of filled in, you know, the extra capacity brought online. So I'm just super encouraged that when all this is complete, that we're going to have, you know, little elbow room and capacity in the model that we really haven't had in maybe ever.
Our capacity would be basically 70, at 70% on this campus.
That's, that's outstanding. And then you may know the answer, Ms. Cook may know the answer. What's, I've had people ask, what's the development, the road improvement project going behind marks outdoors?
Massey Road.
Massey, how does that tie into this, or does it, or expected completions, or?
We, we don't have much control over that, just because it's a federal project, and so we keep thinking that it's going to be anytime now, and we've been saying that for years. So we're hopeful.
Gotcha.
We're very hopeful.
Think of the pedestrian bridge.
Yeah. It's in the same lump category.
Awesome. Thanks.
I think it's worth, I think it's worth noting, just a couple of projects, the handoff, Ms. Hanson helped very early on in the project. I mean, we were doing everything from picking out color schemes to, you know, different patterns, and then that transition to Mr. Pennington has been very smooth, but a lot of energy put in from, from them as well to make this happen. So want to thank them for their time, and they'll always, you know, Tony, just being that rock that we need here in the system to get these projects done.
And we're going to put a statue of famous very high school graduate, Dr. Howard Burgess, somewhere. Maybe out front with some lights on it. Maybe dressed like Vulcan perhaps.
Bra.
We just gave him to be great.
Put some pants on.
All right.
With it being done, are we going to try to get our faculty and students over there in the spring?
Yes.
We have a plan, sort of a rollout plan, where we're going to have specific meetings, stakeholder meetings there. We have a very large robotics competition that Auburn is sponsoring that we're going to have on campus as well. And then we're creating some opportunities during the course of the spring that will get more and more of the community on campus. We're also going to have a, February 14th, our staff will be there, they will arrive there for their professional development, and they'll stay on campus the entire day.
Great, thank you.
And Witt's working on a grand opening in August 2020, so we'll be able to celebrate some things there, tie into our 50 year celebration as well.
Any other comments on that? All right. I'd like to open up for a public comment. If you can state your name and address and length of your comments at three minutes, that would be outstanding. Yep?
Stand up.
Yeah, you can stand up. Just state your name and your address.
My name is Bradley Matrock. My address is 148 Bravo Circle, Franklin, Tennessee, where I just drove from to be here for this. So I'm a Vestavia graduate in class 1999, class 1999. Do I hear athletic director, Coach Seeger's?
Science.
Is that what I just heard?
Yes, you got it.
So I was in Coach Seeger's first class, because it's middle school, eighth grade. So, and I know him well, great guy, and so that's, that's, that's a great thing to hear. It's fascinating to see Vestavia and how it's progressed. And my parents moved into this community for the purpose of my brother and I, as he go to this school system, no other reason, thought about private school, no, we're coming here. And so between the two of us, there's over 25 years of Vestavia education. And so seeing things like the fifth graders who ran crazy times, you know, and won state championships earlier, you can feel the pride in the room for stuff like that. And the only point I have is, you know, what I have emailed about, you know, when you think about children, you know, kids winning state championship, it's incredible. You think about somebody winning a national championship as part of Vestavia's high school, there's been a few of those, something that should be honored. But what about somebody who wins 15 national championships across 19 years, from the years 1989 to 2007? We have that. Okay? Kay Tipton was that. And when you walk into the high school, which I had the privilege of joining as part of the 20th year reunion that we had just recently, no, nothing. No evidence that she was ever there. You see different things for different teachers, different coaches, and she was a coach. So it's one thing to say, yeah, we want to honor teachers, you know, but there's just not enough room to honor every teacher that meant to somebody. You know, if that's her mentality, think about her as a coach. Think about if you go down to Tuscaloosa, and there's no, you know, Nick Saban statue, you know, 20 years from now, and somebody says, well, why isn't there a statue of Nick Saban here? And someone says, well, we were worried about what the other coaches or players might have thought about that. No one would ever say that. It's a shame that Kay Tipton is not honored in the way she should be as part of this community. And the difference between her and Nick Saban is Nick Saban didn't have to build a program upon his arrival in Tuscaloosa. Kay Tipton built everything. She's the reason why money came out of the state government into Vestavia to cultivate the math team. She's the reason why the Rotary Club got started, doing the Rotary Roasts, which later became whatever it is now, the fundraisers every year. She's the reason, alone. She's the reason why when the new wing was built on the school back in 2000, 2001, it became a math wing. They had discussed what to do with it, and Kay Tipton said, we need this, and it was done. So as a passionate person that cares about Vestavia and the school system, I'm here because I am happy for the evolution of Vestavia. It's great to see all the great things happening, and I just don't want to see somebody forgotten who has meant so much to the school system. And that's it. So in just a minute, I will get back in my car, drive back to Nashville, and I will see you back in the middle of December. I'll see you in January, I'll see you in February, I'll see you as long as it takes. And as that gentleman sitting there remarked about the two kids that won the state championship in track, representing so many other people who were part of their success, I represent at least 1 to 2,000 Vestavia alumni who, as well as many, many other people around the state, different levels or whatever, that care just about as much about this as I do. And I'm fine camping in it, whatever, but I just hope that somehow we can collaborate and it's undone. So that's more than three minutes, sorry.
No, thanks for your comments. My brother was a mathlete, self-described mathlete with Ms. Tipton, and I had to drive him up to school before he could drive, you know, getting there 7:05, so he could practice before school, and then gave up all his lunch periods.
That was another case of in creation, the period before-
Yeah.
-school started, that was entirely her.
So appreciate your comments, thanks so much. Anyone else? All right, there being none, this meeting is adjourned.